¿Te mandaron eso?
No, no, no.
No es un gran problema. Tienen que hacerlo.
¿Por qué no lo hacen? Bueno, está bien. Creo que Hunter les dio la llave para que puedan cerrar la puerta.
Sí.
Estoy seguro de que lo tenemos. Gasteiz. Pregúntale a Carmen. Gasteiz, tengo en mi teléfono, pero Gasteiz... Carmen es el que sabe.
¿Monsa Zaino, cómo estás? ¿Cómo estás?
Sí, sí. Ponle la llave.
¿Estamos listos? Buenas tardes. Señor presidente, reunión especial del alcalde y del consejo municipal, 3 p.m., miércoles 20 de febrero, en la sala de audiencia. Llamo a esta reunión por orden. Por favor, levanten la mano si quieren.
¿Puede pedir permiso?
Gracias. Encantado de ser aquí. Estados Unidos, Estados Unidos. Un estado unido, un estado unido. Una nación, un estado. Incluso, cuando se trata de la historia.
Muchas gracias. Empezaremos con el artículo 3, presentación. Número uno, oficero del año. Sería el jefe.
Gracias, señor alcalde. En primer lugar, quiero agradecerles y al consejo por darme la oportunidad de presentar esto. Generalmente lo hacemos en un lugar diferente, en un lugar interno, pero esto tiene gran significado para todos aquí y para todos en esta sala. Y sé que es muy cercano para ustedes también. Muy cercano a la comunidad, muy cercano al Departamento de Policía, especialmente a la familia del oficial Górdoba. Así que, hablando de eso, me gustaría darles un poco de narrativa acerca de por qué él recibe este premio de oficero del año, si me permite.
Vaya.
El viernes 16 de abril... Perdón, el viernes 27 de abril de 2018, el Departamento de Policía de Nogales recibió una llamada de un secuestro posible en el parque de mercancías de Mikasa, donde el sospecho estaba armado con una pistola alta. La descripción del vehículo fue revelada como un Jaguar negro. Mientras el oficial Jesús Górdoba respondía al parque de mercancías de Mikasa, observó un vehículo que coincidía con la descripción, dejando su ubicación en el camino sur de Grand Avenue. El vehículo sospechoso luego se volvió a la calle Mesaverta, donde el oficial Górdoba informó que estaba detrás del vehículo sospechoso. Sin noticia, el vehículo sospechoso se volvió al parking de Via Street Market. Fue en ese momento que el oficial Górdoba se quedó sin opciones, además de confrontar al sospechoso armado. El sospecho detectó su vehículo, mientras todavía estaba moviéndose, y comenzó a disparar hacia el oficial Górdoba, quien aún no había salido del vehículo, porque todavía estaba moviéndose. Después de que el oficial Górdoba fuera inmobilizado, el sospecho secuejó a dos vehículos en punto de disparo y eventualmente fue llevado a la custodia por varias agencias locales, estatales y federales trabajando juntos. Desafortunadamente, el oficial Górdoba se recuperó de sus heridas y falleció en un hospital local. Es difícil decir qué ha hecho el sospecho si no hubiera sido detenido por el oficial Górdoba y hubiera ido a Via Street Market un viernes muy ocupado por la tarde con numerosos clientes haciendo compras de la noche de viernes. Afortunadamente, nunca tendremos que pensar en ello, gracias a las acciones heroicas tomadas por el oficial Jesús Górdoba el viernes 27 de abril de 2018. El oficial Górdoba... Perdón. El oficial Górdoba dejó atrás a su esposa Alisa, a su madre Paquita y a su hija Sofía, de nueve años, Victoria, dos, y a sus dos hijos Nicolás, de tres años, y Jesús Manuel, de seis meses, que nació el 10 de agosto de 2018. La triste pérdida del oficial Górdoba ha reunido a esta comunidad como nunca hemos visto antes. Su muerte fue una gran pérdida para la comunidad, especialmente para su esposa y niños. Pero la familia del Departamento de Policía de Nogales siempre recordará a nuestro hermano heroico en azul. Y hablando de eso, señor alcalde, me gustaría presentar una placenta a la familia Alisa y Górdoba que dice: "2018, oficero del año, Jesús Górdoba, en reconocimiento de su excelente desempeño, dedicación y servicio al Departamento de Policía de Nogales. Signo yo, jefe de policía." Gracias, señor alcalde.
El número dos es el premio de servicio de la comunidad. Jefe, usted.
Gracias, señor alcalde. De hecho, este es el primer premio, y vamos a empezar la tradición aquí con hacer un premio de servicio de la comunidad para personas que van más allá de proporcionar servicio a la comunidad en el Departamento de Policía de Nogales y Nogales. En el mismo día, el 27 de abril de 2018, donde su incidente ocurrió, desafortunadamente, ocurrió en la Via Street Market, y tenemos al Sr. Villa presente. Y cuando esto ocurrió, ellos me dieron la luz de los ojos para darnos acceso a lo que necesitábamos y proporcionar los recursos que necesitábamos para asegurarnos de que hicimos nuestro trabajo diligentemente y estuvimos cómodos y todo. Cerraron las puertas al público, pero apretaron las puertas a la policía con gratitud y ofrecieron lo que necesitábamos, bares, agua, cualquier cosa que necesitábamos para asegurarnos de que lo proporcionamos o que hicimos de nuestra diligencia con la investigación. Aproximé a algunos de los hermanos de Villa un par de veces y disculparon la inconveniencia, y dijeron que no era la inconveniencia, que estaban tratando... solo intentando ayudar, y harían lo que necesitaran hacer para asegurarse de que nos ayudaran en nuestro proceso de dueño. Cuando piensas en la palabra comunidad, creo que piensas en Via Street Market. Sabes, ese día, ellos iban más allá. Cerraron las puertas casi dos días, sin hesitar, para asegurarnos de que hicimos lo que hicimos y que hicimos lo que teníamos que hacer, y lo hicimos tan cómodamente. Después de todo dicho y hecho, de nuevo, muy disculpado, fui a uno de los hermanos de Villa y disculparon de nuevo y les agradezco, y dijeron que no, que no fue nuestro placer servir a nuestra comunidad de la manera que hizo. Así que, hablando de eso, me gustaría presentar al Sr. Villa con el premio de servicio de la comunidad anual. Dice: "Departamento de Policía de Nogales, premio de servicio de la comunidad 2018, presentado a Via Street Market, en reconocimiento y apreciación por el servicio de excelencia al Departamento de Policía de Nogales." ¿El Sr. Villa?
Felicitaciones.
Saludos.
Gracias, señor alcalde.
Gracias, jefe. Y gracias, Sr. Villa, por todo el ayuda. Muchas gracias.
Una cosa rápida, somos familiares, siempre lo hemos sido.
Lo sé.
Y Nogales es nuestra familia.
Sí, gracias. Gracias, señor. Número cuatro, órdenes. Número uno, consideración posible de acción de orden 2019-02-007, una orden del consejo municipal de la ciudad de Nogales, Arizona, designado Joseph Dimas Rueda Jr. para ser magistrado de la ciudad durante un periodo de cuatro años y aprobar un acuerdo de empleo recién llegado.
Se mueve, señor.
Segundo. Discusión. Vaya adelante, consejo.
Gracias, señor alcalde. Quiero dirigir estas próximas preguntas a la abogada del municipio para dar clarificaciones. Bajo el punto uno, donde dice empleo, tiene ahí que el individuo debuta su atención y esfuerzo pleno en el oficio. ¿Cuál es la definición de atención plena?
Atención plena es un fin de semana de trabajo de 40 horas, al menos. Señor alcalde.
Vaya adelante, consejo.
Es autoexplicatorio, en el sentido de que es una posición plena. No puede trabajar en ningún otro lugar. Y creo que hay otras secciones que abordan esa preocupación en cuanto a tomar otros roles, como un rol donde habría un conflicto de interés por su parte.
Lo que quiero saber específicamente, ¿puede hacer trabajo legal en el lado? ¿Dónde señala que hay otro? ¿Dónde señala? Porque lo que mencionas es autoexplicatorio, no es autoexplicatorio para mí.
Permítame revisar el contrato más adelante.
¿Por qué no pueden ir si tienen que ir para no ser avergonzados? Esto tomará tiempo, jefe, sé que pueden ir.
No traí el manual de personal. No esperaba esa pregunta en particular. Tendré que salir y obtener el manual de personal, pero hay algunas secciones que están ahí, párrafos. Si miras la última frase de ese párrafo...
¿He visto todos los de esos?
"Aunque las reglas y normas de personal del municipio no generalmente aplican a Joseph Dimas Rueda Jr., están los párrafos 801, 802, 803 y una serie de otras secciones que están en el manual de personal." Desafortunadamente, no traje el manual de personal. Consejo Varona. Pero si lo hubiera traído conmigo, creo que podría leer las secciones particulares que abordan su tomar otro rol donde eso le prohibiría o no le permitiría seguir en la posición plena de empleo con el municipio.
Señor alcalde.
Vaya adelante.
Sr. Parra. Así que, mi pregunta es, sin tener que indulger en el manual de personal, ¿puede el magistrado hacer trabajo legal en el lado por sí mismo? Sí o no.
Mi lectura de esta sección es que no puede. Eso es correcto.
Okay, así que eso responde, y solo quiero asegurarme de que el magistrado del municipio es prohibido de hacer cualquier tipo de trabajo legal personal en el lado, según nuestro manual de personal. Solo quiero asegurarme...
Señor alcalde.
Vaya adelante.
Consejo Varona.
Sí.
Como abogados, miembros de la Barra estatal de Arizona, se requiere de hacer trabajo pro bono. Estoy seguro de que este contrato en particular no puede dejar de lado las demandas que tenemos como abogados. Y si el Sr. Rueda quisiera seguir trabajando en base a un trabajo pro bono en concordancia con las requisitos de la Barra estatal de Arizona, este contrato no permitiría ese tipo de trabajo.
Okay, eso está bien. Lo único es que me gustaría, entonces, que usted lo traiga, que si este individuo hace trabajo pro bono, que no prohibamos trabajo pro bono, pero debe hacerlo con la aprobación del administrador de la ciudad. Que incluimos eso en la oración ahí, en ese apartado uno. Pero lo abordaré, señor alcalde, con su permiso, bajo una modificación, ¿okay? Mi segunda pregunta es sobre el número seis. ¿Podría por favor explicarme qué significa bajo severance pay?
¿Quieres una explicación completa de todo el párrafo, consejo?
Bueno, básicamente es... Tal vez pueda darte mi interpretación de esto. Solo... Nunca he encontrado severance pay de todos los administradores con los que me encargo, excepto en la ciudad de Nogales. Entonces, ¿entiendo que si... y este contrato es de cuatro años, ¿es un cuatro años obligatorio? ¿O podemos hacerlo dos años?
Señor alcalde, consejo Varona. Es de cuatro años.
Es obligatorio.
Correcto.
Okay, eso es lo que quería asegurarme. Así que, al final del cuarto año, por alguna razón, decidimos no continuar con el individuo. Solo porque tomamos la decisión de no continuar con el individuo y el contrato ha llegado a su conclusión, el municipio de Nogales va a ser penalizado $25,000 más beneficios de jubilación. Nunca he oído algo así. Bueno, escuché sobre esto cuando empecé mi primer periodo aquí, con un administrador, que todo estaba pagado antes de que el individuo se fuera. ¿Mi... como tú dices, interpretación común acertada o incorrecta?
Señor alcalde, consejo Varona. Si estás refiriendo a... la... esa cantidad de dinero que acabas de mencionar siendo pagado, si no hay renovación del contrato, eso es correcto. En cuanto a tu inquiri, en cuanto a... en otros contratos que el municipio ha entrado similarmente con otros administradores que fueron designados por este honorable alcalde y consejo, han habido otros contratos que tenían la misma disposición en él. Sabes, el ex abogado del municipio, el actual administrador de la ciudad, todos ellos... tienen esa disposición similar en él.
Bueno, si el actual administrador de la ciudad tiene eso en su contrato, no sé cómo me llegó a entender, especialmente para un contrato de un año, no sé cómo me llegó a entender, pero...
Ese es... señor alcalde...
Vaya adelante.
Consejo Varona, ¿no puedes entrar en eso? En este punto, estamos tratando de un contrato en particular...
Eso es lo que quiero tratar. Tú eres el que trataba al administrador de la ciudad y otros administradores. Yo no lo traje, solo estoy respondiendo a lo que tú trazaste. Okay, así que para que el consejo sepa, yo no favorezco severance pay en absoluto. No voy a dar... No voy a tener al municipio de Nogales penalizado $25,000 más beneficios de jubilación a ese $25,000, solo porque vamos a decir que ya no necesitamos a usted. Solo porque le decimos al administrador que ya no necesitamos a usted, ¿por qué nos ponemos en una posición financiera como esa? Ahora, si ha sido hecho antes... No estoy de acuerdo con esta práctica. No sé si otros administradores fuera del municipio de Nogales a los que esto se aplica. Así que, en cuanto a esto, señor alcalde, se trata de severance pay, estoy totalmente en contra de eso. Y no apoyaré ningún contrato de cualquier administrador. Y es básicamente para tres personas, ni siquiera cuatro, porque la señora Robinson... estamos hablando de las personas que están bajo nuestra dirección que consiguen este beneficio que no estoy de acuerdo con en absoluto. $25,000 es el 40% del salario de un policía. Podríamos contratar otro policía. Hay otra parte aquí sobre... y no puedo, pero recuerdo haberlo leído, donde dice que tiene derecho a... si... tiene derecho a un aumento del salario del 2% si le damos un aumento del 2% a todos los empleados. Él tendría derecho a un aumento del 2%.
Eso es en el punto número dos.
Número dos, gracias, alcalde.
No, número tres. Disculpen, número tres.
Oh, sí, gracias, alcalde, el salario ahí.
Señor alcalde, tengo una pregunta. Bueno, pero quiero dirigirlo a tu preocupación, que, por cierto, estoy de acuerdo. Así que, ¿estás diciendo que consideraríamos el contrato, pero aplicando ese personal...
Sí.
Okay, así que lo están modificando.
Lo haré.
Así que harás esa estimación, ¿de acuerdo?
Gracias.
Gracias.
Solo en esto, señor Parra. Solo quiero asegurarme de que esto es... cuando pones el 2% ahí, o más, generalmente aplicado a la organización, concuerdo con eso. Lo que no concuerdo con en el espíritu de justicia para el individuo es... no veo a nosotros en el pasado, no veo a nosotros en el futuro, especialmente en la economía, dando un aumento del 2%, ¿okay? Pero, ¿qué tal si le damos $1,000 a todos nuestros empleados? No se considera un 2%. ¿Tiene derecho a ese $1,000? Lo cual creo, mi opinión personal es, que él tendría derecho a ello. Pero bajo esto, la única forma en que tiene derecho a algún tipo de aumento es si nosotros, como consejo, dijimos que todos nuestros empleados obtengan un 2%. No veo que suceda, pero veo que nos estamos dando un bono de $500, un bono de $1,000. Así que, en justicia para él, si mi interpretación es correcta, señor Parra, me gustaría agregar una frase ahí que dice: si le damos un bono a... un bono que generalmente se aplica a la organización, también se aplicará al salario de José Dimas Rueda Jr. Y creo que eso es justo. ¿Por qué queremos excluir a alguien como esto? Mira, no vamos a dar un 2%. Las cosas podrían cambiar, no creo que cambiemos en los próximos dos años. Pero creo que si vamos a dar $1,000 a nuestros empleados, deberíamos ser justos con él y poner ahí: "Tienes derecho al bono también". Así que esos serían mis... voy a esperar, y luego, a menos que... señor alcalde, cualquier que tus deseos sean, si quieres hacer la modificación ahora, ¿de acuerdo?
Honestamente, cuando leí ese 2%, a mí mismo, sentí que las posiciones designadas que tenemos en la ciudad no deberían de ser consideradas cuando le damos a nuestros empleados posiciones clasificadas, un aumento del salario del 2% o del 10%, lo que sea que sea. Creo que las posiciones designadas tienen un buen contrato, todas ellas, y ganan mucho más dinero que todos nuestros empleados de posiciones clasificadas. Así que, leí eso y, sabes, me sentí como... no sé si realmente deberíamos dar un 2% también. Pero, quiero decir, depende de usted.
Bueno, él es... señor alcalde.
Vaya adelante.
Gracias, señor alcalde. Tiene derecho a un 2%, pero si le damos a nuestros empleados generales un 1%, no tiene derecho a eso. Solo tiene derecho a un 2% o más para todos.
Pero no daríamos un 1% porque, quiero decir... ¡Venga! No les daría nada.
Bueno, no... damos bonos, ¿de acuerdo? Lo hacemos por razones financieras también. Solo quiero ver... quiero decir, no veo que suceda, pero concuerdo contigo, alcalde. Si quieres aplicarlo, puedo hacer la modificación para aplicarlo también. Pero solo quiero asegurarme de que si le damos un bono a la organización general, que todos ustedes deberían tener derecho a ese bono también, no solo a todos. Así que todos nuestros empleados sean tratados justos e iguales.
Déjame hacer una pregunta, señor... Cuando nuestros empleados obtuvieron el bono de Navidad, ¿tú recibiste uno?
Sí.
¿Tú también?
Todos lo hicieron.
¿El abogado, tú también?
Eso es correcto, señor alcalde. Okay. Señor alcalde, si... Perdón.
No, no, vaya adelante.
Okay, gracias, señor alcalde. Consejo Varona. Para abordar, creo, tu pregunta sobre el... sobre tu solicitud de opinión legal acerca de lo que esa frase... la significancia de esa frase.
¿Qué frase?
La última frase en la sección tres acerca del salario. Concuerdo que si lees esa frase... si el... si el bono es para menos del 2%, entonces no tendría derecho al bono. Solo quiero hacer eso claro.
Gracias, señor Parra, por esa clarificación. Okay. Señor alcalde, ¿qué me gustaría que haga? ¿Quieres divertir mis modificaciones de amendar, o quieres que espero a todos los demás?
¿Hay más discusión antes de que... señor Anacial, tienes ese aspecto. Cada vez que veo ese aspecto, me preocupa. ¿No?
Creo que parte de lo que el Dr. Varona estaba discutiendo, lo hemos discutido ya. Creo que ya pasamos por esto. De nuevo, quedó por el administrador de la ciudad negociar el contrato, pero creo que habíamos discutido el acuerdo de dar una pago de terminación debido a lo que más ha pasado en el pasado, ¿correcto? Y creo que todos nosotros estábamos casi, o al menos yo, en la idea de que no íbamos a agregar eso al contrato.
Sí. Okay, y ahora, ¿alguien más?
Solo...
Vicealcalde.
Sí, gracias, alcalde. Al punto que el Sr. Varona hizo, y que se basa en lo que el señor Parra dijo en el número nueve, donde él tendrá que mantener sus posturas y todo eso. Sabes, es... lo que el señor Parra estaba diciendo, que sus derechos legales tienen que seguir haciendo algunos esfuerzos y todo eso. Así que creo que eso clarifica.
Okay. Vaya adelante.
¿Lo quieres, señor alcalde? También creo que, sabes... estoy tratando de ver dos contratos al mismo tiempo, pero también creo que dice ahí que si no va a ser renovado, su contrato no va a ser renovado, tenemos 30 días en los que darle noticia. Creo que eso debería cambiar a 90 días. Y eso básicamente sería tres meses de pago, que él ya sabría cuál es la situación. En caso de que decida que quiere buscar un trabajo en algún lugar. Y esto es todo hipotético, quiero decir, esto es solo el concepto. Pero creo que 90 días sería más razonable. Al menos tendría más que decirle 30 días y, sabes, no vamos a renovar su contrato. Al menos 90 días, él tiene tres meses en los que trabajar.
Okay. Bueno, esto es lo que he tenido que decir. Así que... señor Parra. Así que, el Sr. Rueda, él ha visto este contrato, él sabe este contrato. Hablaste con él sobre este contrato.
Correcto.
Él aceptó este contrato.
Sí.
Okay, así que si pasa por una modificación ahora, ¿qué va a pasar?
Necesito volver y presentar cambios.
Y luego tenemos que volver de nuevo. Okay, y como sabes, necesitamos... esto necesita ser hecho ahora. Como ayer. Hablamos de eso. Necesitamos un magistrado de la ciudad. Así que, okay, vamos... señor Varona, vamos con tu modificación. La modificación está lista. Y en eso... justo después de que esta reunión termine, necesito sentarme contigo y necesitamos... o el consejo municipal justo después de que termine, traer esto de nuevo lo más pronto posible, porque tenemos que llenar esta posición, y tiene que estar llenada ahora.
Podemos hacerlo el viernes.
Podemos hacerlo, eso es lo que iba a decir. Hagamos la reunión el viernes.
El viernes voy a estar en Seco y Benson haciendo una presentación en Cochise College.
¿Mañana?
Podemos hacerlo el martes.
Está bien.
Señor alcalde.
Sí.
Perdón.
Vaya adelante.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, with respect to your question, okay, perhaps the city manager will, does not concur with what I'm about to say, however, I, if there is a modification to this contract, okay, we'll just say that there's a motion to approve the contract, there's a friendly modification that, that is requested by one of the council members, or the same person is making the motion, because I think there's been a motion to approve the contract and a second.
For discussion.
For discussion. There's been now some discussion with respect to a modification to the contract. That modification is yet to be offered up, but I believe it's about to be offered up. Once it's offered up, and the agreement with the modifications is approved by mayor and council, and there's direction at that point given to the city manager to take that agreement to the candidate, if the candidate is in agreement with the agreement and the modifications, and he signs off on the agreement, there really is no need to come back to mayor and council and approve it.
I agree.
There's an offer, there's an acceptance.
We can have the meeting on Monday.
I agree, Varona, Mr. Mayor, there's an offer, there's an acceptance, there's consideration, there's quid pro quo, so at that point, we have a meeting of the minds, and we have a contract that could be entered into the record by our, by our city clerk.
Okay, but I mean, no.
I agree with you, Mayor, we should prepare, so we can put it on our schedule, in case he says no, it's on, we know we're going to have a meeting, if Mr. Pata's correct.
But the reason, the reason I'm saying this, Mr. Varona, is that if he says no, then what we're going to do? We're going to go after some more candidates? If he doesn't agree with it, he says, no, I want the twenty-five thousand, then we go, now here we go again with a committee and, and again, finding more candidates? I think we do not approve this right now, I think you take it to him, see if he wants it, and then we come back and approve it. Because he could easily say no.
Yeah.
He could say, no, you know what, if I'm not going to get a seven spade, I'm gone.
Yeah.
That could happen.
Yes, it could, I agree with you. That's what I was saying, I agree with your meeting on Monday.
Yes.
Even if he does agree to everything, and he signs off on it, then we have a contract.
Yeah, then on Monday, we come, and we sit here, and we just approve it, and that's it. And it's gone, and then you already had the conversation with the candidate, and he's the judge, and he accepts it, and because otherwise, otherwise.
The only thing I would say, Mr. Mayor, just as a point of clarification, if he accepts it, we don't have to come back for another meeting and approve it, do we?
Unless, unless, unless we, unless we pass it right now, as is the amendment, then, then we don't have to come back. But if we don't, if, if he doesn't approve it, then we have to go back again with, looking for some more people to apply for the job.
All right.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I agree. So.
We'll go ahead and approve. I really don't want to approve it, but if you, it's about the council.
Right, no, well, let's just, I'd like to.
Let's do the amendment.
Yeah, just one thing that I want to ask Dr. Felix, that councilman Valonado reminded me of here. Dr. Felix, if the magistrate wants to have continuing education hours, that we agree to pay for his membership in the state bar, and all of his continuing educational hours, and the magistrate decides, I want to go to Hawaii for this continuing education hours, does it need your approval, or is it his, at his sole discretion?
I would expect it, to travel out of state, it'd be a request to do so, and I think I would have to sign off on it.
Okay, that's, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Dr. Felix, you don't answer my question when you use the verbiage, "I think." That doesn't answer my question. Do I need to put something in here, travel out of state with the authority of the city manager, or are you telling me he cannot travel without my authorization out of state?
I would say that any travel out of state has to be approved by the city manager.
Okay, as long as you say that, then I'm in, because I don't want this thing to turn into a free-for-all, that one person is going to dictate where he's going to go, at his sole discretion, because we can't function as an organization like that, nobody should be.
Councilor Varona, I have to review all the travel requests and sign off on it, and you can rest assured that I would not authorize travel to Hawaii.
Because if that's the case, I want to go.
Mr. Mayor?
No, you don't, yes, before, well, go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, under the employment agreement here, under one, under where it says employment, on the last sentence, I would just like to add as a, as a motion, to say that any pro bono work done by Joseph Dimas Junior must have prior approval by the city manager, so that we can keep track of what's going on, of any potential conflicts or anything like that. If he's going to do it, Mr. Pata says they can do it, they encourage it, I encourage pro bono work, too. But to protect ourselves, the city manager should say, okay, you're okay with this, to make sure it's pro bono work, and I, Mr. Pata has already indicated to me that, that he cannot do side legal work and get extra money on his own. He's already assured me of that with the personnel manual. So my motion to amend the main motion.
Let me just, one, because I think I just picked up on something.
Okay.
On all these numbers that you have here, Mr. Pata, and I know from the policy.
Right.
I recommend, because the way I think, I don't think we should pass this right now, but we're going to go with the amendment, I recommend that, that you put a little synopsis behind each one of these, so that we know exactly what it is, because otherwise, we have to pull out the policy manual ourselves, and go through them, and figure out what eight oh one, eight oh two, eight oh three is. And maybe there, it'll explain exactly what Councilman Varona wants in reference to him being, to be able to do work outside. And, and just by the look of it, Councilman Varona, we've made some changes already in this contract, that I think we should not go through an approval today. Let's go through the amendment and bring it back on Monday, if it's okay with members of the city council.
I concur with you, Mayor. I'll follow, I'll follow your lead on this, Mayor, I just want to.
I think it'd be better, cleaner, it'll be cleaner for, for, for Mr. Dimas, and it'd be cleaner for the city, and this way, Mr. Felix, you'll have an opportunity to talk to him, and express our feelings on this, and then we'll bring a good, clean contract on Monday, and it'll be quick. Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So it's clear to me that there's some direction under this discussion with respect to the agreement.
Yeah, there'll be the amendments on the contract.
And we'll have to review the record, but it, just spelling out those particular paragraphs that pertain to the personnel manual, and a couple of other points that have been taken up, may I, may I, may I recommend that the, the current motion that's been, that's been made, that the same offer up, a motion to table, that way, mayor and council have thirty days to take it up again.
Yes, but we don't want thirty days.
Well, it doesn't have to be thirty days, it could be tomorrow, if you'd like to, but there is a, a motion to table.
Okay, whoever made the motion, please would you.
Do you want to withdraw?
Withdraw, yes, sir.
Oh, withdraw?
Well, you don't have to withdraw, I'm sorry.
Table it.
Just move to table it, man.
Yes. Okay, on the favor, signify, they say no?
Aye.
Okay, now.
Thank you, Mayor, I just, I just want, Dr. Felix, I'm speaking for myself, but I'm sure the mayor and everybody agrees, our concern is with aspects of the contract. We have no concerns with his qualifications, with the community recommendation, nothing. So don't misconstrue what we're trying to handle in a businesslike manner with his qualifications. We have no qualms with his qualifications to be the city magistrate, okay?
Okay.
But we also have an interest to protect the citizens of the community, though, too. Thank you, Mayor.
So, so basically, after we tabled it, there's no reason to amend anything, you actually know what direction you're going to go with this? All right, so, all in favor, signify, they say aye?
Aye.
opposed? Yeah, I have it, okay, thank you very much, you have your direction. Order number two, consideration possible action of order two zero one nine dash zero two dash zero zero eight, order of the city council, order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, approving a lease with Santa Cruz Children's Museum, Inc. Motion?
So move, Mayor.
Second discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
This again is for Mr. Pata here, and we did get, this is one question, we did get clarification on, I guess, exhibit A, right? That'll leave later for, if anybody here wants to discuss what exhibit A is. But anyway, on, if we look at number one here, okay, it nowhere here, number one, does it mention that the property is as-is? Or do you have anywhere here that dictates that the property that is being taken by the children's museum is as-is, and that the city has no further, further liability on, on the repairs?
UCB.
And most contracts, I mean, whether it is or not, I mean, most contracts will say as-is, or there's, there's other liabilities to be taken on by, by whoever's doing the lease.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hanesean, so I'll direct you to section twelve, where, page sixteen of the packet, where it states that.
This is section twelve of the, of the contract?
Yeah, the contract, I'm sorry, that's correct. Agrees that all property of any kind may be on the premises during the life, it shall be at the sole risk of the Santa Cruz Children's Museum. And Santa Cruz Children's Museum agrees to pay, to protect, and to indemnify, defend, and hold harmless the city from and against all liability damages, costs, and expenses from cause of acts, and suits, et cetera, et cetera. That clause is, is, is pretty favorable to the city, of course, in the sense that it's pretty much handing the, handing the Santa Cruz Children's Museum the, the property for them to deal with it, and deal with anything that comes with it.
But it still doesn't specify that is, I mean, all the contracts I've ever seen on a lease, if, if they're taking over, they're going to do all the repairs, and they'll all say as-is, that you're selling the property as-is, or you're renting the property as-is, okay? That's, that's just one question here on the first, on number one there, okay? I don't think there's a problem, I don't think there's a problem with the people with the, with the, with the children's museum about, if they understand that, it's understood that the property that they're leasing would be as-is.
But Councilman, basically, number twenty explains everything in reference to that, too. In the event, only the event, within five years, and then provides variable documents sustaining, number two, verification of membership, number three, active status of nonprofit, number four, completes the following improvements to the premises, A, repair the lift stations, sewer line clean, and construct, everything, it tells you everything.
It clarifies everything there, but, but the words as-is basically covers everything.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, I can go through this, and I can sit here, and that's another question I've got, there's some stuff that's on there, that's, that's mentioned there, that, that I can question, and one question there is, who takes care of the parking lot? I mean, basically, the parking lot will need to be, will be, need to be paved or repaired, the parking lot's not mentioned in here, right? It's shown, it's shown here that they're taking over, over here, right?
Yes.
But that's part of the deal, but it doesn't specify anywhere in here that, that the leaseee is, has to go ahead and, and maintain the parking structure, the parking lot, so, I mean, so that whole list there is all fine and dandy, but there's always the catch-all, and it's called as-is, right?
By the way, I looked at it with exhibit A, everything that was highlighted on here is basically what they're going to be taking care of. And the parking lot is on exhibit A. Mr. Hanesean?
The parking lot is, is under exhibit A, yeah.
Exhibit A.
It just says they're taking, they're, they're taking, they're leasing that, the parking lot.
Yeah, but this is what they're, they're going to be taking care of also, you know, they're going to take that part of the green and all the buildings, parking lot, and everything surrounding that.
As, as long, that's why I'm glad we're out here in the open instead of in exhibit session, because this way, everybody can, he'll listen to what the, the concerns are, right? And that they don't come back later, and it, and it changes the whole deal, right?
Mr. Pata?
You know, as long as, as long as it's understood by everybody involved, that, that the parking lot, the parking structure is basically to be cared for by the children's museum, any, any repairs to it is at their expense.
Mr. Pata?
Yeah.
With exhibit A here, is this telling us that this is all they're going to be taking care of?
That's correct.
Even though it doesn't say as-is?
So with respect to, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hanesean, with respect to the premises, we're talking about parcel numbers one thirteen dash four five, and.
Yes.
And then, but it then, it goes on to say, and more particularly reflected on the attachment, collectively such an otherwise known as Palau Resort Buildings, et cetera, et cetera, including easement is necessary for vehicular and pedestrian access to such parcels, see attachment A.
Yes.
So basically, what you're seeing there in attachment A is what, is what we're.
They're going to be responsible for.
We're just, we're talking about.
Yes.
So then, Mr. Pata, you are in agreement, they are responsible for it, and you're, you're stating that the words as-is is not necessary? I just want, I just want to put on the record that, that as-is is not necessary, this, if it ever comes back to haunt, then we know where, where it came from.
So, I, I, I would tell you that, based on the use of certain language within the agreement, such as the language in, in that paragraph twelve, along with some other language that I just noticed, that refers to the premises being, oh, I know which section it is, it's the section where it discusses how they're required to have to turn it back in in as good a condition as they received it. So, under those two, with those two.
Can we say that the parking lot there is, is in good condition, or as, they return it as, as it is now? Are we going to have pictures of that, or what?
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hanesean, so in essence, the building is being rented.
As-is.
As-is.
As long as that's understood, as long as it's here, and it's under, you know, that we're, you're giving us specifically your opinion that it is as-is, like I says, I just don't want it to come back and haunt whoever's there in five years, whoever's here in twenty years, or ten years, or whatever, I just don't want it to come back and haunt it, whoever's there, and, and as Dr. Varona rapidly says, who were those idiots that signed it, right? All right, so, you know, let's just make sure, let's just make sure we know what the, what the deal is. Okay, that's, that's just one, if you think that's, if that's, if you think that there's no need for that at all in this contract, then I will accept it, but I will accept it on your word, right?
Now, you're perfectly welcome.
Again, all the contracts I've seen, and I'm sure other people here will tell you the same thing, if you're going to, if you're going to rent anything, if you're going to sell anything, as-is is a, is a common, common deal.
Clause.
That's all right, let's, let's go on to number, 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 number three here, okay? Actually, number three, okay, here, and number three, it says here. Okay, here, and number three, it says here, number three says it, and number, I think it's number 20, there might be conflicting, maybe I'm just seeing a conflict in it, but there it states that if we're going to go past the five years, said option shall be exercised in writing no later than 90 days prior to the expiration of the initial term. See that?
Correct.
Okay. Then, on number, is it, number 20, it states if, if all these conditions have been met, set aside, it said, "Event, the term of the lease shall be for a total of 25 years and commence and terminate. All other terms and conditions agreement shall be applicable in full force and effect." It doesn't, it doesn't, you know, it seems like if everything is going well, which is fine, hopefully that's, that's the idea. It just seems that it will go automatically into, into the 20 years, the 20 additional years.
That's correct.
So, which one is correct? 90 days or automatically goes into 20 years?
If, if all those conditions preceding are met, Councilman Hanasian, and...
So, then the 90 days are just if they don't intend to proceed with it?
That's correct. That's correct.
But if they intend to proceed with it, they don't have to advise the city or anything, it just automatically goes to it?
In said event, the term of the lease herein shall be for a total of 25 years. Automatic.
Okay. So, 90 days, then, we look upon it as, then, then, you know, I'm just saying, you know, somebody should be aware that five years is coming up. And, and somebody should be aware that, that, you know, it will automatically, without anyone saying anything, will go into the 20 years, right?
That's correct. It's incumbent upon the...
As long as everything is met, okay? What happens if some of this stuff is not met and it goes into 20 years? That's another question.
Well, that's incumbent upon the city, Councilman...
Then maybe I should have it on their, on their calendar to make sure that it's there, right?
That's correct.
On number four, okay, it says here, "SCCM agrees to pay the city as rent the annual sum of $1,000 per month during the lease term and any renewal period," okay? Okay, but then it says, "Provided here, here however, that SMC shall be granted a credit against such monthly rent for the total dollar value of the improvements and rents made by SCCM to the premises during the initial five-year term of the lease agreement." Okay? Now, I think we need a clarification on this. Let's just say they're putting in 250,000, 300,000, I have no idea how much they're going to put into the, into the Children's Museum. That means that in the first five years, they can legitimately not pay any amount.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
You're asking me for my legal opinion as to that particular clause and how it reads. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. My legal opinion is that that is correct. If they pay, if they make $240,000 worth of improvements, they're not going to pay any rent in the first five years.
For the first five years.
And they're not going to pay any rent for the next 20 years.
20 years.
Well, that's, that's the clarification I need, because here's, here's, it says here, "Provided however, shall be granted a credit against such monthly rent for the total dollar value of the improvements," right? And made in the first five years. Now, later, it just says that if they do, do go on to the next 20 years, it will revert back to the same terms. First of all, when I read this, when I read this, I, my opinion is, they have five years. Five years, $1,000 a month, and at the end of the five years, they, that's it. Then they start paying $1,000 a month for the next 20 years. No increases, no nothing, straight $1,000 a month, right? Which, which would be basically just kind of signifying that, you know, and I understand the city will end up with whatever's there at the end of 25 years. But then again, we're ending up 25 years later, and I'm sure whoever's there is not going to decide, you know, two years or a year before the lease ends, to go ahead and put in new air-conditioning units or do whatever, right? Unless there's an agreement ahead of time that they will extend the lease. And of course, we won't be here, I won't be here, a lot of people here won't be here, I may be here, but...
I think you're the only one that's not going to be here.
Maybe the only one here, right? Maybe arguing the point then. But, but does, does the city council understand that if, let's just say they're to put in $400,000, that's 400 years, or 400 months, it's 400 months that they will not be paying any amount, right?
Yeah.
I understand that.
Is that, is that everybody's understanding?
Yep.
Because that was not my understanding. It's everybody's understanding?
That's my understanding. I mean...
And that's the interpretation of the...
Mr. Hanasian.
Is that the interpretation?
400 months.
Mr. Hanasian.
400 months, 400,000.
Hey, hey, if I was to rent you that, all right, rent it to you, I wouldn't rent it as-is because it's nothing but a junk.
Oh, no, it's understood, that's understood.
So, so if we as a city were to fix it, to rent it, for a thousand or $2,000 a month, it's understandable.
That's all that's understood, I'm just trying to get the clarification.
But if somebody's going to invest 200, 300,000, we don't even know what it's going to cost. It could be probably more.
That's all understood, that's not the question, I'm not questioning what's going to be...
I understand, I understand, but I mean...
The question is to clarify exactly so that whoever's here, which is why I'm glad that we're not in executive session, that I'd rather have the public hear exactly what it is, right? I'm not saying whether it's right or wrong, all I'm telling you is that's, I needed clarification on that because if you read that here until you get to the other part, unless you're very, very sharp, which maybe I'm not and everybody else is, then I, you know, you don't pick up that it reverts back to that and includes the next 20 years, you know, which is 244 months of no rent, right? Because if I remember, the original contract was not like that. The original contract we saw, before we went to the executive session, we're not, didn't have that, but that's all right.
Mr. Hanasian, you've been screwing around with this for two years, the original contract.
Why, I say, I know that, I know that.
You know, I mean, we need to, we need to...
We already had it, we should have already done it.
It should have been done a long time ago, yes.
Long time ago.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I went all through, all over the contract, and I'm very happy for you people to take over. Really. This is a win-win contract, and we are all going to win. The best of luck.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
If I may, one of the big issues with the contract was that the city would have to do all the repairs. And the Children's Museum Board suggested that they would assume all the repairs and bring everything up to speed, just turn over the keys and they take the full responsibility. So, that, the offset is that I would then have to come back to the city council, ask authorization for 200,000, 400,000.
And you wouldn't get it?
No.
But again, I'm not arguing the contract, I'm arguing just clarification, right? All I'm trying to do is get clarification, that's it, there's no, I'm not discussing it. You know, if you ask me, am I for the Children's Museum? Yes, I am. So, that's not the discussion, the discussion is clarification, right? There's some certain things here in the contract that basically, because looking at contracts I don't see, then I'm asking the question, that's, that's the only reason. So, you know, you know, don't be mad at the, anyway, yes.
Don't shoot the messenger.
Yes, exactly. Here, here we go, here's another, this is another question. It says here that, that it will be, you know, and now I've lost my track here, okay, number seven here, right? The premise is in good state and repair and this and that. Now, who judges? Who's going to, is, is it, does the city go there and send somebody and say, this is correct or this is wrong or we need to repair this? Or is it, is it just left up to the board of the Children's Museum as to whether the repairs should be done or not done? And just as, just as a question, again, on the parking structure or if there's any sidewalks or anything like that, I mean, you know, because, because later on, here's just, here's just another question. It states in there, and maybe, you know, maybe everybody doesn't want to hear all this, but, but anyway, in there it states that the contract can be, can be canceled for lack of payment, okay? But if there is no payment, then there is no...
Then we don't have to worry about it.
There is no, it doesn't say that. And, and, you know, it says it's, they have to maintain it, but who judges what they maintain? Is it, is it us? Is it them? Is it a third party? Who judges what, what maintaining the property is or not?
Do you honestly believe they're going to have a Children's Museum and it's not going to be properly maintained?
I'm not arguing that, I'm arguing clarification, that's all it is. The question is just who judges? If you tell me that it's going to be judged by the pristhood, that's fine with me.
I can go and take care of it.
If you can be around, if you can be around...
I have experience in construction, I can go look at the buildings.
But it all does revolve around the city manager.
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor, Councilman Hanasian. We are the landlord. As the landlord, we are entering into an agreement with a leaseholder. It is for an extensive period of time. As the landlord, we have certain obligations, we have certain duties, and the duties are set out in the agreement. We have a right to go and inspect and conduct due diligence efforts with respect to the property that we own. And so, it is incumbent upon the city, in the years to come, to conduct these inspections and follow-up on their, on the due diligence and on the, on the requirements that are set out by law and in this agreement with respect to the upkeep of the property by our tenant.
Well, that's, that's the only thing I'm asking, I'm asking who judges? Now, you're saying the city will judge?
Because we are the landlord, and that's what I'm asking.
Because we're the landlord, so, so, just in case, at that time, you know, if I'm not here, you know, in 20 years, that, that city will be able to go there and, and say, we need this done. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. I do want to address one issue that you brought up. You said something along the lines of 40, 200, $400,000 investment.
Yes, 400,000.
And whether, whether the city would still have to honor that past the 25 years. No. This agreement is for 25 years.
Yes, yeah.
And so, if you're, I did the numbers and you're talking about 33 years' worth of $1,000, no, it stops at 25 years.
It stops, yeah, that's, that, that I gather from, the contract will end, so that, it ends there, right? But all I'm saying so that it, so that everybody understands, basically, and I believe, yeah, they'll put in at least 400,000 bucks. That's not, that's not, again, that's not what I'm just debating, I'm just debating clarification, that, that it will, if they put in 400,000, it will, it would be for the life of the contract where the $1,000 would not be paid to the city, right? That's just clarification, that's all, I just wanted you to clarify that, right?
If they do it in the first five years.
Pardon?
If they do it in the first five years.
Yeah, that was another question, that was, that was, the other question is, now, there seems to be no, and I understand there's a lot to repair, okay? That's understood, just, just a lot. And I understand maybe all of it will not be done at the same time, okay? So, I don't know if, if there should be a, some comment made on a time limit or an extension for something, because all these repairs supposedly should be done within the first five years, okay? Now, to get the occupancy permit and they want to move in there at the end of one year or two years, then basically all these things have to be done, right? Before they get the occupancy permit. Well, you know, is there, is there anything in here that would say, let's just say that they need an extension to fix something, and maybe the occupancy permit can, they can, you know, kind of bypass it for a couple of months or whatever? Is there anything in here, like I says, I've gone through deals where, which it's supposed to be ready for September 1st, right? We would like to have the people in there September 1st, but there's some things maybe pending, right? Will that be left up again to the city manager or will it be left up to the people who issue the building permit or what's, what it is? Because there is no time limit. The time limit maybe is, is the five years, right? There's a five-year time limit, because then to exercise the 20 years, all those things have to be done.
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead, you want to, go ahead.
If I may, the commitment of the board is pretty substantive in terms of trying to get the turnkey, the key to start doing what they need to do to get occupancy. And number one, or two, the, the checks and balances, it involves the requirement that they belong to the National Association of Children's Museum, which is pretty strict in terms of certification and monitoring. So, there's some checks and balances there. I don't think that the board would want to sit around for five or six years without operating the, getting into operation. They were waiting for us to come up with some cost figures, some dollars, and quite frankly, I don't know that the council would vote for the 200,000.
That's not, that's not the question, this is just for clarification.
The commission there, and number one, the certification by the National Association of Children's Museum, the requirement that they become members and good standing and maintain that membership, I think is the checks and balances that's required.
All nonprofits are like that. You better be on the dot, because otherwise you lose your certification, and I've been part of nonprofits and...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
If I can, just, Mr. Councilman Hanasian, to answer your question, yes, it is at the, at the, it's incumbent upon the city and city administration that will be assigned to, city staff, city administration will assign staff to have them, you know, follow-up on what's set out in the agreement. I don't know if that's, that answers your question, but I, you know, and, Mr. Mayor, if I may, to address a, I don't know if I want to call it a logistics thing, but a procedural matter. So, this agreement, it voted on by council today and approved. I've, I've reviewed the minutes of the meeting that was held by the Children's Museum, I believe it was sometime last week, if my memory serves me right. And in the meeting, in the minutes of that meeting, they acknowledged that the city had accepted them as the, as the awardees, if you will, of the previous RFP that was put out. And they acknowledged, obviously, that they continue to be interested, of course, and they, they accepted certain terms that had been set out previously by mayor and council, but there were certain terms that they were not completely in agreement with. And I believe even some terms that are set out in this agreement. Perhaps the city manager can, can point me to just those minute details that were in this, that are in this agreement, that will probably still have to be taken up by the board of the Children's Museum and voted on, so that we have a meeting of the minds and this agreement can be, you know, moved forward with at this point. But perhaps the city manager, since he's been in contact with the, the board members, can, can enlighten mayor and council on those, those details.
Well, just like the city magistrate's contract, I need to go back to the board and present what's incorporated and the language incorporated, and then they have to adopt it. So, we may have to come back in case there's some changes. But we've had several meetings with the leadership of the board, and they've agreed to some of the terms that we put on the table, and so they're, and we are, are at the point where so they want to move along, and I think city should move along as well.
So, you're telling me that we have to come back to this again?
Well, if the, do they have to vote on it? We've already accepted it, right?
So, just as I, Mr. Mayor, just as I mentioned, this is an agreement that... this is an agreement that, and there may be some modifications, but I'm not hearing that there are going to be any modifications at this point.
You're, you're telling me that there's gonna be modifications from then? Is that what you're telling me?
Mr. Mayor, uh, my understanding is that this agreement was taken to them and they agree in principle to most of what's in this agreement. Let me try and wrap my, let me try and consider, and perhaps, uh, Deputy City Manager Kissinger over there can, can point to those details that the, the, do you have the minutes of the, of the, of the meeting, John? That, that, that are, that reflect their, the minor changes that they, that they may have to reconsider after the vote today?
Sure, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, um, there was some changes, uh, that were discussed in their meeting. And those changes were articulated to Dr. Felix. And it's my understanding that they've been incorporated into this agreement. This agreement went out, when it was all said and done, when we wrapped it up, finished it out, went out to a member of your board, which was Dina Sanchez. And I'm not sure of her title. I don't know if she's executive director.
She's the treasurer of our board.
The treasurer. It went out to her, sent to her by me. And it was also sent to all of, of you.
Yes.
Dina got it. I, I, my understanding is she spoke with her board and her attorney. And everybody was okay with the agreement, except for one thing that was changed in the agreement that wasn't sent to you. And it was, remember, you actually made the change, uh, Mr. Parra? And I'd have to go find it. But it was incorporated. The change that they requested was incorporated into this agreement. So it would be, it would, it would be shocking to me if they were to disagree to this agreement, because they kind of already have agreed to it, but they haven't signed it, so...
Oh, I'll tell you what it was. Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman.
We don't have that change?
Yeah.
The one I sent you Friday?
Yeah.
No, I don't think you have it.
Mr. Mayor. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Okay, I'm remembering the, the, the particular term. It's on, on, uh, on section 16 with respect to, "The city shall also pay the entire cost of water user fees for the first six months of the lease. And thereafter, the city shall bill the Santa Cruz Children's Museum for water fees in excess of the average consumption of the first six months."
I think that's in there.
That was in there.
It's in here.
Right. So it's in there. My, my point is, Mr. Mayor, that the minutes of the, of the meeting, of the, the minutes that were taken up by them and the, the vote that was taken up by them, basically asked for that. And so at this point, uh, mayor and council would, would consider it. And, uh, and, uh, so did they, and, and again, my, my, the minutes reflected them accepting the prior agreement.
No.
But, but, uh, but with the modification of, of the water.
We officially were told that we had to reject the proposed lease. But then we came back with, we would accept the lease with the following changes.
And they were this one?
That was one. Then the other one...
Luis, if I could help?
Ma'am, could she finish? Perhaps she's got them right there.
Could you please, could you please go to the podium, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Go to the podium, please.
Sure.
Hi, everybody.
Hello there.
Everybody want to go home? My name's Martha Valenzuela, and I am Secretary of Board of the Santa Cruz Children's Museum. And, uh, so I'll just go through the little motions that were made through that, during that meeting as we went through the proposed lease. And then there were some modifications made. So, uh, the first thing was that, um, let me find it. Okay, so it was about accepting. We had a choice of whether to accept, uh, after the five-year period, whether we wanted to continue with the 20-year option. And we voted to approve that 20-year option. Then, hold on. Okay, and then it was made to move forward with option number two as outlined, that we would include 200 feet immediately north of parcel number two to be included. The other one was that the board would assume full responsibility of any or all improvements or repairs required with the city granting credit for the total dollar value of improvement repairs made thereafter. The rents, rent payments will be $1,000 per month. And then the last one that passed, uh, no, sorry, two. A motion was made that the city will provide water, sewer, and garbage collection services during the term of the lease to include the initial five-year lease plus the 20-year option, if applicable. The last one, a motion was made to strike the first sentence in item number six of the proposed lease. And I don't, I don't know exactly what that is, but it's talking about, I think, subleasing. So, uh, it is the, we're not planning to, like, lease it out to another corporation or whatever. But, uh, we are planning to, in order to maintain the, the children's museum and our hope for good sustainability is to rent out the property for birthday parties, weddings, et cetera, because it's gonna be that beautiful. So, uh, that would help us with our income too, for, for sustain, for maintaining the museum. So that was the last one that we voted on. Any other questions?
No. No, no questions, Mr. Mayor. So in, in light of, of the motion and the agreement, uh, that was, uh, in light of the counteroffer and clauses that, uh, the children's museum board voted on that have, uh, that have now been taken up by, by, uh, that were taken up, and some of them are reflected in this agreement. But see, they made a motion and they, they pass, they, they asked for those changes. And some of them were placed in here, but not all of them were.
Go for it.
Okay? And so, uh, and so you take, for example, the, the, the one relating to the water issue that you just mentioned. There was, there's a, there's, I don't think the language that we have in this agreement is not completely in line with what you just mentioned with respect to the water. Am I correct? Because, because the, 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 the language that, that you just read doesn't specifically say, "The city shall also pay the entire cost of water user fees for the first six months of the lease. And thereafter, the city shall bill Santa Cruz for water fees in excess of the average consumption of the first six months." It reads that the, the, the city will provide water...
Forever.
Forever. So, so my point, Mr. Mayor, is that this board can pass the agreement that meant, that, that we are, that the, the administration is proposing today. Once it's passed, um, the, uh, the, the children's museum will then have the opportunity to review the agreement that we would pass today, that the city would pass today. And if you're in agreement with this, then you would vote on it as a board. And we would, at that point, have a meeting of the minds. We would have quid pro quo. We wouldn't have to come back to the mayor and council. And after that, it's a done deal.
Okay, let's, let's stop right here. Let's stop right here. You got two contracts here that, oh my God, I, I can't believe.
Don't mess with me.
Okay, okay. When did you know about her minutes or their minutes? When did you, both of you know about their minutes?
Uh, last Friday.
And last Friday, and you give us this? No, no, let's, let's get serious. You give us this after you know about their minutes? Why didn't you put their minutes and what they're asking on this contract to see if we approve it? Instead of going around and around and around? You presented two contracts to us? Ah, I just can't believe it. I, I'm sorry. If you knew about it, you should have presented to us that contract. Why are we gonna approve something that we think that it's reasonable to the city, but that's not what they're asking for?
Well, Mayor, if I may, we did incorporate recommendations and, and, and what they adopted into the minutes. The only differences was on the water. That, uh, that was, discussion was how.
Yeah, but also on the subleasing. It's not here. They, they said they, they don't want to do that, and, and you're saying that they cannot sublease. So, so basically you have items here that, how can we approve something like this and then, and then have them go and then make a decision over there if they like what we approved for? Why didn't you bring us a, a document that's, that's, that we can actually have discussion as a council?
Mr. Mayor, so, so the, uh, I understand your concern. What I, what I, what I believe, what I believe is, is, uh, is happening though, Mr. Mayor, is that at some point, the changes that they, the minute, the, the agreement that they, uh, that they reviewed as a board, uh, and, which was the one, the one we had sent them, that agreement was pretty much the, the, the agreement that they had, uh, that they, um, they were in line with. It, it came a point, I guess, on Friday afternoon, that we received those minutes. And the minutes were different from what we had, uh, written down in, in, in the agreement at that point. So to call them back, the board, on Friday evening to reconvene and tell them that, A, we, we can't live with water for, for, for the rest of the time. Or, or, uh, you know, with the, the, the other minor changes that, uh, that, uh, that they discussed. At that point, I think, might have been a, a difficult thing from a procedural standpoint for the, for the board, to reconvene and take up the agreement after the changes were made. I don't think they had time on Friday afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Perhaps this morning they could have reconvened and said, "Okay, look, this is the agreement that's gonna go to council today. Are we in agreement with it or not?" In my understanding, on Friday afternoon, from, uh, from, uh, from, uh, Dr. Felix and, and Mr. Kissinger, was that they pretty much were in agreement with, uh, with the changes, except that they were gonna have to go back to the board after, after you all voted on it.
Well, maybe I could help out. So on Friday, with my conversation with Dina, after I emailed her this contract, right, that did not include the changes to number 19, but that she emailed me, that she requested the last sentence of 19 that I took to you, Mr. Parra, and that, I don't think it's in yours, but you can check your 19 to my 19, right here.
And number six isn't there either.
Which one is it? Subject to me, Sam.
But what I told Dina, and I'll tell you my conversation with Dina was, "Dina, when we get in front of mayor and council, I'd sure like to be on the same page on this contract. I'd sure like you guys to be happy, and we can both stand here and say, hey, this is the bet that we came up with, and this is what we're giving you." So that's what my conversation with Dina was. I haven't heard back anything from Dina that she was, didn't like anything in that contract at all, except for 19. We talked about the water.
We sent you these, right?
Yeah.
That's what the, the, the point that we were not happy.
But, but if you give me, if you give me a second, we had the minutes when we sat with Dina and Mr. Parra was hopeless in your office. We had the minutes in front of us. So we knew what the minutes were, right? We talked about the contract. We talked about the water. We talked about it. And I said, "Hey, Dina, I, I don't think that the city can just give you free water for 25 years and you can just leave the hose open and not worry about turning off the hose. Why don't we cap it?" She said, "Yes, I think that's a great idea. We should cap it." And so then the conversation went around, well, how much should we cap it at? Right? And that would be an arbitrary number. I don't know how much to cap it at. You know, so what we talked about putting into this agreement was that we do the first six months, right? Figure out what that is, take an average of it, and that's what we'll cap it at. That's what's in the agreement today.
That's what, that's what we would be approving, and that's what they're supposed to approve?
That, that, that's what they're, they indicated to me, at least Dina did, that they're comfortable with it. And that's been since Friday.
Okay, but, but now the, number six is, shall not sublet. And, and they, it says here, shall, so if you knew about the minutes about that, why wasn't that placed in there for the, what they want to use it for weddings and, and to be able to rent it out?
Sure, but I don't think they're going to lease the property for weddings, right? I'm not, that's not what my understanding was. They want to have weddings there, they could charge for weddings. But they're not gonna sublet it to another organization that would lease it for weddings. So it's up to them to allow them to have wedding, but they're not gonna sublease the property. That's my understanding. But I'm not the legal representative of all that, Mr. Parra. No. They don't have party cards.
No alcohol in the children's museum.
Well, it, it, there is a clause in here that says no, well, no smoking. Says no smoking. Does it say anything about alcohol?
Okay, well, go to birthday party.
Yeah.
Written consent. It requires written consent by the city, Mr. Mayor. So they can...
Maybe the clause should be put in there, no alcohol.
Okay.
Just, just, Mr. Mayor, just, just one more, Mr. Parra, here. And again, because of all this confusion here. It says, "Notwithstanding foregoing, the city shall pay for the entire sewer and garbage fees." That's understood, okay? I got no problem understanding that. But then the next sentence says, "The city shall also pay the entire cost of sewer and garbage fees." Is there something, I don't know, that there's extra billing?
For the first six months.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
No, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
That was a typo that I sent you on Friday. That's not in the final one. That's not in the one that's, that's attached to it. It says it twice. I caught it too, or removed it. It's a typo. That, that's all it is. But if you continue to the next sentence, it tells you exactly what happens with water fees. It just repeats it twice.
But, but the water is correct, and it will be tapped.
Have everybody signed off on it? Yeah, the first six months, it'll be...
Because that's what, that's what it says here. That's what I read, you know, I mean...
I'll give you another example. There's term in here spelled T-E-R-N in one place. It's a typo. You know, somebody will probably catch it sooner or later. But term, term is spelled turn in here. I mean, that will have to be cleaned up too.
What's the problem with that? They should have been given copies.
Is there any more discussion? Go ahead. Vice Mayor.
Just some questions, uh, going back to, um, back in September 24th, on attachment, uh, number eight. It was discussed, and it was, uh, proposed by the city council that the children's museum have the Nogales Santa Cruz. And it's written here. That's the only place it's written on that atta, on this note. Did that ever happen? What happened with that discussion, Mr. Felix?
Mayor, Councilman Verona, uh, they did not accept that amendment.
Okay. Now, um, the, another discussion we've had, we had here was when, when the first proposal was that we had both partial numbers. There was gonna be a, a legal survey description separating, 'cause the second partial, which was, if you go down to, I think it's 1345-255, included the whole golf course. And there was gonna be a legal survey done to separate X amount of section, if it's 200 feet or X amount of session, section, uh, that was gonna be included besides partial one, uh, the first partial, which is 11345999. one, the first partial, which is 11345999. So it would separate the rest of the golf course.
Mayor, Councilman Maldonado, the parcel, the legal description is highlighted there at 200 feet, and it's been pinned by that.
Is that our, this new number, is this a new number, 13452-225?
No.
Let me take a look.
No, that's the order that you're gonna vote on if.
But that, is that the whole golf course like it was last time?
It's not the legal description.
No. No. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Parra.
This is not a legal description, right? This is an exhibit. A legal description would include coordinates. There are no coordinates on this. Just wanna make that clear. But there is an exhibit, and so.
But in, in the contract, in the lease, you have two partial numbers. The second, I don't have, unfortunately, I don't have the partials numbers we had back in September, but the second, the second partial number that we, was presented to us was a partial number that included all 18 holes, Mayor. That's why.
Oh, no, it included about nine, nine or two.
Or nine. That's why I'm asking it, and we were gonna get it surveyed and separated.
We were never going to include those, any of those.
I know, I know, but legally, if you, if you, if we lease you the partial, we're leasing you the whole thing. We're not, we gotta, I understand this, but we gotta identify it in the contract. That's what I'm saying. It's gotta be specified.
Mayor, if I can, we're gonna have it surveyed by, and certified, that the legal description is those specified marks.
Yeah. That would be proper to do like that, after we approve this, then go put in the contract, then do your legal survey. But I don't think they ever wanted the all, all golf course.
That'd be impossible for us to give them, give them water, because that'd be too much water.
Yeah, under each, every one, that's why, I just wanna make sure.
They can't afford to do that.
This is, this is what I understand, right here.
That's what I understand, too. So if we approve this, then you're gonna get the legal description of it and put it into the contract.
Okay.
Okay. And the other, the other one where Mr. Hernandez was, was talking on seven, you know, where, you know, if they terminate the, surrender, surrender their premises to the city, that it says it in as good condition as received.
As is.
Uh-uh. I think it's as good as conditions as is.
As is. Basically, they're saying that we're gonna get it better than what it is.
Yes, but it's, the wording says as received.
I understand, but I mean.
But as is rece, received?
Yes.
As is received? No, he wants the word received scratched out and replaced with, replaced with.
As is. There it is, Mr. Parra. Thank you, Tata.
Councilman Schumer, not Tata.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
This point that Councilman Maldonado brings out, 25 years from now, I, I would just hope to Mrs. Valenzuela, who's the officer here, that you would please, you know, keep in your records, before you take custody of the property, that you hire a professional photographer, video photographer, and get a video of all of the property, inside, outside, conditions of the parking lot, everything. So as is is defined as when you turn it over, and 20 years from now, if none of us are here, you have something in the record to prove what the definition of that is. And I think that's incumbent upon you and not us.
Yep, yep.
Do you want that as is or as, because we're gonna pay for the cost. We're gonna, we're gonna put, invest, you know, basically, we're, we are investing because we're not collecting rent.
Yeah. But as is and received, to me, is semantics.
You're not collecting rent right now either.
I know, ma'am. I know, ma'am.
I mean.
But we're, we're giving you the opportunity, huh? But if we're not here in 25 years.
But, Mr. Parra, but as is or received, to me, is semantics. That's why I'm asking them to have that video done, and that clarifies it. That is, the exhibits, the evidence, that's important here.
Okay, I just need to ask one question. Are you done, Mr.?
No, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Because on 14, it, it also repeats the same thing at the end. In good conditions when, when received.
Before I call for the question, before I call for the question, I need to ask two questions. Yes. Mr. Parra, Mr. Felix, are you comfortable with this?
Yes, I am.
Are you, are you comfortable with this?
I'm comfortable with the agreement.
Just say yes or no. Are you comfortable? No?
Mr. Mayor, I'm comfortable with it, okay? Absolutely. From a legal perspective, I'm approving this as a form. I have heard some things today, okay, that will, there's a motion on the floor, a second to approve. I'm hearing a modification to change line seven to strike the word received and turn it into an is. And I, earlier today, I heard the, some reservations with the language as is not being in the agreement, and I would request that whoever's gonna do the modification to line seven also request a modification to line one, where it could say, city does by these presents lease to Santa Cruz Children's Museum, the building and property as is and more fully described as. Amen. So someone can, can.
No, wait a minute. I mean, I haven't finished yet. Okay, members of the board, you that are sitting here looking at us, trying to figure this out, are you comfortable with this? Are you?
As, as, as we've discussed right here.
As we discussed.
No changes. No changes.
Okay. Are you comfortable with it? Yes. Okay. Okay. Before, yes.
We have a quorum here. And if you will vote on it, and you need us to vote on it.
I don't think, I don't think we need to do that, but I just want, I just wanna get a feel from you, that you're comfortable. Okay, uh, okay. Mr. Parra, all right. Members of the council, listen to the attorney.
Yes.
Please. You can tell Schumer, please?
I, I've been trying, but his trumpeteerism is out of whack right now.
Okay. Go ahead. Say, tell him what you just told me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe there's a motion on the floor by Councilman Rojas.
Rojas?
The second by Councilwoman Lopez to approve the lease. There's been a friendly modification offered up by Councilman Barona to have the first sentence of the lease, section one of the lease read, city does by these presents lease to Santa Cruz Children's Museum, the building and property as is and more fully described as.
You amended.
No. No, it's Mr. Hernandez.
So that was Councilman Hernandez with the friendly modification to line one. This, the second friendly modification came from Councilman Barona to strike the last word.
Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Maldonado to insert the word is and strike the word, and delete the word received. And, and I believe that is what the, the motion entailed. And so to that end, Councilman Rojas and Councilman, Councilwoman Lopez would accept the friendly modification made, offered up by their, by their colleagues. Is that the case?
Yes.
Councilman Rojas. So at this point.
I call for the question.
Well, then, sir, just, just give her an opportunity.
Was the first line struck on as far as subleasing?
No, he said it's okay if it stays like that.
Okay.
Okay, because you're not gonna be subletting, you're just gonna be renting.
What about alcohol?
And you can with the city's consent.
Are we putting in the clause, no alcohol or?
You can with the city's consent.
No.
They gotta have alcohol. Can alcohol be served?
This is not a Paladuro. This is a children's museum.
As long as the city property are.
Yeah.
Can it be added on?
Okay, call for the question. I call for the question. No. When I call for the question, I call for the question.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Call for the question, we need to proceed.
Yes, okay. Members of the City Council, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, can we take a roll call vote?
Roll call vote. Okay?
I'll start from here.
I'll start with myself.
Mayor Garino?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Rojas?
Aye.
Mr. Maldonado?
Aye.
Mr. Barona?
Aye.
Mr. Hernandez?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, members of the City Council.
Good discussion.
Finally. This meeting is adjourned. You can talk anything you want.